The playground equipment at Maple Park. The direction received that evening was to put the playground equipment, disassemble it, and put it in storage. And if we received within six months, an organization that may be interested in the equipment to bring information back to the city council. Some months ago, we received a letter from the Tufankian Foundation requesting for this playground equipment to be donated to them. We are here before you regarding this item, and I would answer any questions. And Mr. Bulenikin is also here if you have any questions related to this item.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? We do have a card from Mr. Gazarian. Mr. Gazarian.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, staff, good evening. I'm here actually on behalf of Tufankian Foundation this evening, and the item before you is for the benefit of an Armenian school in Midjnavan. It's called Midjnavan High School with a student body of 260 students with grades from first grade to 12th grade. The school is located in the town of Midjnavan, as I stated. It's in the southern Khashatag region of the Republic of Artsakh, where I just returned from exactly two weeks ago today. This matter was first brought to the Tufankian Foundation's attention shortly after a fundraiser that was held in my home on April 6. There, the executive director of the foundation, who then wrote a letter that was sent to me that I caused it to be delivered to city manager Ms. Beers, referenced that which the executive director had come to know of by way of this body's having resolved on March 26 and placed the materials in some storage. I will not read that letter into the record. I'm sure the city manager has it. The letter was also CC'd to the director of Community Services and Parks. But I would like to say a few words about the Tufankian Foundation for those of you who do not know what it does. It was launched in 1999 to address the most pressing social, economic, cultural, and environmental challenges facing Armenia. Its founder is entrepreneur James Tufankian, who had already been using his business ventures to promote social justice for over a decade back then, first in Nepal and then in his ancestral homeland of Armenia. However, for him, it soon became apparent that complex longstanding issues were hindering Armenia's well-being and that that could not be solved by market forces alone, and it required commitment and innovation. So he went on, the last two decades, trying to develop new models to address poverty and promote education and protect natural environment and many other issues in Armenia. Since 2002, the foundation has pursued a combination of on-hands of reforestation, community initiatives, public advocacy, schools being constructed and reconstructed and reformed. And the focus in Armenia of the foundation is not political, but it recognizes that the many of the challenges are tied to other major problems facing Armenia, including some rule of law issues and some past corruption and short-term mentalities as well as energy security and affordability. What needs to be said, and I will conclude very briefly, is that in 2003, the mission of the foundation was expanded to include the Republic of Artsakh, which is in dire need of services. And during the last 15 years since 2003, they've responded to these needs by building and renovating houses and schools and clinics and supporting wounded soldiers and et cetera. The foundation had its fundraiser in my home. They asked me to hold the fundraiser. It was for the very same school. And I would just urge you as constituents of your city who have an affinity to the people of Armenia, and this city and this body has an affinity towards children everywhere, to please consider donating this so that it can be used. Thank you very much.
I don't have any other cards. Ms. Devine, would you like to go first?
Sure. I do have a, I think we have a photo of the equipment that we're talking about in case we've forgotten about it. I want to thank everyone tonight for listening. When the proposal for donating this playground equipment to Armenia was first discussed by council, five months ago, it was rejected by a three-to-two vote. The rejection was based on two reasons. First, giving used equipment to Armenia would be an insult to the Armenian people and the Armenian government. Second, due to the age and condition of the equipment, it would be unsafe for the children. Included in the vote was the, of course, direction to staff that if a foundation or an organization came forward and wanted the equipment, that we would consider that. And staff was directed to destroy the equipment if no one asked for it after six months. And you can see the equipment there and what kind of shape it's in. And subsequently, we did receive this letter from the Tufankian Foundation. In making my decision regarding this resolution, I considered two reasons which resulted, the two main reasons which resulted in the rejection of this equipment. First of all, reason number one, in considering that the concern that a donation like this of used equipment would be an insult to the Armenian people or the government, I found no evidence to substantiate this concern. And I am convinced that this well-connected and respected Tufankian foundation would never have requested this equipment if there was any possibility of this resulting or insulting the people of Armenia or the government. And secondly, in considering the concern about the condition, age and condition of the equipment, I did two things. First, I met with staff and asked them three questions. First, because this equipment is 18 years old and has remained in service beyond the city's normal 12- to 15-year replacement cycle and is overdue for replacement, does that imply in any way that the equipment is currently unsafe if its use were to be continued for an additional period of time? And the answer was no. How many additional years do you think there are left in this equipment without concerns about safety? And the answer was three to five years. Based on the existing condition of the equipment, other than possible cosmetic and reinstallation work, would any of the equipment require significant and ongoing repairs to maintain it in the same condition? And the answer was no. Next, I listened to all the presentations, et cetera, read the staff report. During oral presentation, staff has always maintained that there was no safety concern regarding the continued use of this equipment. And staff is recommending that the resolution be approved because the equipment can find a new life through the donation to the Tufankian foundation. And that was the statement that really moved me, that this playground will give new life, not only to the equipment, but to the kids that we would be servicing, that we would be donating it to, who are right now playing on dirt with very little equipment. And this equipment would be like a very important gift to them. So therefore, I am convinced that by staff's answers to my questions and to the recommendation for approval of the resolution, that the equipment is safe for the children of Artsakh, that they can enjoy it. You know, we all are aware of and perhaps seeing the need for help in Armenia and Artsakh. We are also aware that the city of Glendale has in the past donated equipment to Armenia, and that's used equipment, by the way. We have before us a reputable foundation that has asked for playground equipment for a school in Artsakh, and we have the opportunity tonight for Glendale to show its support of Artsakh by approving the resolution for the donation of this playground equipment to these children. So after my colleagues, Mr. Mayor, complete their comments, I would ask that you allow me to proudly, I hope, make the motion for the approval of this resolution, and let's send that equipment to the kids in Artsakh, to the Tufankian foundation who's requesting it. Thank you.
So let me just get this straight. Our staff says that there's five more years of use in this? And if so, why did we replace? That's the obvious question.
That's not exactly what I said, right?
And, I mean...
Sure. Mr. Mayor...
If that's true for the equipment for Verdugo, if, for Verdugo Park's equipment, if that, the statement is, the same statement is true for Verdugo Park equipment, let's not replace it for another three to five years? Because if you calculate it, it's another $100,000.
Mayor Najarian, members of the council, Councilmember Garpetian. The Verdugo Park playground is the old playground equipment that was donated from the Americana. We really don't have a actual playground there. There's a couple pieces. In terms of the Maple Park playground, we do have, you know, about three to five years of life, but as part of the DIF strategic plan in 2016, it was, back then, it was, the Maple Park all-inclusive playground was approved. We needed a large space, and since Maple Park was next on the list, we went ahead and put Maple Park. The reason why we have a 10-to-12-year program in replacing playgrounds is with the new technology and the different research and healthy play and the different events, the newer events each playground provides, we like to change it up at all of our parks. So we estimate between 10 to 12 years on all of our playgrounds.
And, excuse, Mr. Mayor, we also have standards, don't we, that in the United States, in California and Glendale, that, you know, we use our equipment for a certain amount of time, and then it must be replaced?
Yes.
That's not true in other countries, in Armenia.
You don't know that?
I'm not sure what that is.
Don't know that?
I know this is an exciting conversation, audience, so just hold on. It may get better.
And the other question, is staff recommending donating this, the equipment?
They did. That's what the staff recommendation says.
Staff is not, we're asking that the city council look at the...
Approved.
And I understand that. Let me just clarify so that we're all on the same page in terms of this playground You have a request that's before you as the city council to make a policy decision related to playground equipment that has been dismantled appropriately and placed in storage if the council so desires to donate it to another entity or organization. The playground equipment has lived its life here in the city of Glendale based on our needs and our expectations of what you as a council set as priorities for this community. Now, it's up to the council to make that policy decision whether you donate this item to, whether it's Artsakh or elsewhere, or you don't. And if the staff report is written that way, it shouldn't be written that way, because honestly, this is completely a council decision based on what you would like to do in terms of moving forward with the playground equipment. And I apologize for that if it's written in that manner.
And also, if we don't approve this, this will be destroyed. This equipment right there will be destroyed.
Well, I, did, were any of my colleagues invited to that April 6 Tufankian event?
Not me.
I would have liked to have attended.
No, I wasn't invited.
No, I was not invited, so this is...
$250 a person.
This is part of, this is part of the...
But I know that Ms. Devine was invited, so, okay.
Mr. Gazarian, as a member of one of our commissions, you're well aware of the protocol. You don't yell things out from the back of the room. So, thank you. We gave you ample time, excess time, and I didn't make any issues, so. Mr. Garpetian?
I really appreciate Mr. Gazarian being here, and the Tufankian family has done a tremendous amount of work in Artsakh, in Armenia, especially close to Stepanakert. I was there a month ago, three weeks ago. I was in Armenia and Artsakh, and I went to every little city. I went to every little village in there. They've done a great job. And I spoke to members of the family this morning as well. I thought we voted on this item. We voted for this item not to be sent to Armenia, and there was a reason behind it. This equipment, the way it's set up, I don't know when this picture was taken.
The day before it was taken down. The day before it was taken down is when that picture was taken. I took it.
I understand that, okay. I appreciate you letting me finish, because we don't interrupt each other. I don't interrupt my colleagues when they speak. But nonetheless, I have some pictures of the same equipment as well, okay? And if you can put the first file up.
Continue, you want to...
No, just move forward, please. Yeah, yeah, okay, hold it right there. Keep this right there. This is in Artsakh. It's in Stepanakert, okay? So in order, for public to know, in order to send this, just keep this here for timing. In order to send this equipment to Artsakh, you have to get a truck from Glendale, take it to the port, either Port of L.A. or Galveston, put it in a container or a trailer, ship it to Poti, which is a port in Georgia. Then, from Armenia, you have to send a truck to pick up, and it'll take about 12 to 15, 12 hours, good 12 hours, from Armenia to Port of Poti, if I'm not, because it's a big truck, to pick up this equipment, bring it back to Armenia, and then from there, drive another at least eight to 10, 12 hours to Artsakh, and try to assemble this equipment over there. Now, I have other pictures of that equipment, but this is, this is, this is in Artsakh. And it's not that, they may be poor, but they're not beggars. I'm kind of disappointed in this whole notion of it has to go to Armenia. No, it doesn't. It lived here 18 years. It was used 18 years. It's dilapidated, the plexiglass is, the color is faded, the claw of the slides are faded. Some of the protecting coating is chipped off, it's rusted. When you promise children of Armenia or Artsakh, or any country, that you're going to send equipment to them, playground equipment to them, they're looking for something like that. And this equipment is available in Armenia, and the manufacturer is in Armenia. If, and I mentioned this last time as well, if we really want to do that, Mrs. Gazarian and/or Tufankian family, I'm willing to, this is another one. Just keep going forward. This is another one. Move forward. This is an older one. It's in Artsakh. Move forward, please. This is what they have right now. This is an old, very old one that they have in Artsakh. And when they remove these, they don't put it in another school. They destroy it. And every other play equipment that we had in Glendale that was replaced, they were all staff report, last staff report, said it has scrap value. They would always scrap it out. So this is a little kid playing, and there are foundations that they build these equipments, and it's very inexpensive. If you do it in there, you create jobs, you buy it from Armenia, you install it in Armenia, they come in and install it for you. And this equipment will cost, I don't know, $8,000 to $10,000. I don't know what the cost of shipping this thing is over there. So this notion of, oh, they don't have any, they may be poor, I understand. They are. They're disadvantaged. But they're, the reason we voted on this, I thought we voted on this not to go to Armenia, and now it's back again. And right after we made the decision, and the Tufankian family from East Coast, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct? Asked for this thing. So, and they've done a great job. Nothing against the foundation. If this has another two or three years, what are you going to, send it over there? And two years later, they have to dismantle it and throw it away? What's the point? If we want to send equipment, playground equipment to the school, I'm willing to write a check. I was not invited, but I will write a check. Let's come together, put it together, purchase one from Armenia, made in Armenia, and install it there. You don't have to go back and forth and all this, you know, it's kind of not right. And if you go to the second file, please.
Second file?
The old equipment file?
Sure.
You see these pieces coming off? These are all dangerous material that's been exposed. Move forward. This is the plexiglass of the same equipment. Move forward. This is, these are all the posts. They have graffiti on it. Move forward. Look at this one. You want to send this to, what are we trying to say? It's just, I just don't understand it. If we want to do something from heart and be sincere about it, let's do it the right way. And it can be purchased over there and installed brand-new equipment for them, not send this thing to, there are so many griffitis on it that we painted over it. You want to send that over there and say, this is our gift to you? I think that's insulting. That's my thing. I, again, I appreciate my colleagues' sentiment on this, but I think, and I was there, if they don't, and they have old equipment. When they remove it, they don't put it somewhere else. They don't put it in a school that they don't have equipment. They just throw it away because they're old. The same thing with this one. Thank you. Excuse me. We are spending too much time. I want to move the item based on alternative two.
Which is?
Yeah, so I'm, well, let him make the motion.
Okay, so you're, Mr. Agajian, you're moving AF2?
Yes.
Was that to not send it?
There's no AF2, so if...
I'm sorry?
There's no AF2. So if nobody's wanting, inclined to make the motion AF1, someone can always make a substitute, or not even substitute motion, can make a motion.
Alternative two.
Yeah, but it's not on the agenda, it's AF2. So alternative two is to basically choose not to approve the resolution. But I think, as Ms. Beers noted earlier, it'd be, if that's the direction, it should be a motion to discard the equipment.
Well...
Well, first of all, so is that your motion then to dispose of the equipment in the usual, in the usual manner?
As the city was doing. As we have done for last 50 years.
A second.
Yeah, a second.
Okay, but we're still discussing, so Ms. Beers...
Okay. So I'm late to the discussion, and as you can see, it's quite passionate. I didn't realize it was actually coming up tonight. I wanted to go and to see it visually. I've only seen pictures, and this is the first time that I see Mr. Garpetian's close-ups. So I hope that if, in fact, it gets to Artsakh, I hope maybe prior to that or at the location, they have some way to kind of rehab it a little bit, spray paint it, or do something to make it look a little bit better, especially the way the actual material is coming off some of the, some of the items. Overall, I'm for it. I think it's a good idea to have it sent to Artsakh, and hopefully it would, you know, work out for the little kids. And so anyway, I'm generally for it, but it's the first time I've seen the pictures of the equipment itself, and like I said, I didn't actually get a chance to look at it.
And I'd like to add another, Mr. Councilmember Garpetian was talking about the shipping and the cost, et cetera. That is, we have that all covered. We have, or I have a group that's willing to pay for all of the shipping to Artsakh or Armenia or wherever it goes. So that's all taken care of. And I didn't really want to play this card, but I have a Facebook post that Mr. Garpetian posted in a playground with a slide on dirt. And in this Facebook page, he says, "This Armenian-American orphan Christmas fund, the need for new play equipment was evident, and the school administration also expressed a great need for one."
Yes.
Now, this play equipment is, on their standards, is new. We are willing to do cosmetic work on the equipment if necessary. I just, it pains me to think that we would destroy this equipment when someone can be, some children can be using it. I also want to say that in 20, in, huh, 20, see, an ambulance was sent that was 13 years old, that needed a lot of work. Two fire engines were sent that were 23 years old and needed work and could possibly break down. And if that wasn't going to be a safety problem for the kids and people in Armenia, I don't know what would. This equipment is not going to hurt anybody. It's just going to make people, little kids happy. That's the end.
We should get into the ambulance, because I was involved in that. I've got a lot to say about that. Let me go to you, Mr. Garpetian.
Let me just make a couple of clarifications. Yes, I posted that school because I was involved with a large group. I was a very small donor that always supports small, small nonprofits that they do work all over the world. We support a group that take, bring shoes, brand-new shoes, to an orphanage in Mexico. I never talk about it. But the key to my post was new, new playground equipment, not the old and dilapidated one. That school is a large school, has 120 kids. They're all kindergarten kids. They can use a good equipment. And we, half the school is rehab, it's renovated. Everything is brand-new in that half that's renovated. The second half is going to be renovated because there's fundraisings like Tufankian family does. There is a fund, what is it called, the Christmas Orphanage Fund, and they're raising money to rehab the second half because there are 90 students in waiting list for that school. But the key was new equipment. And as far as the fire trucks go, I was the one that made that motion twice in a year and a half to donate those fire trucks to Armenia. And after it was approved, they sent their head of the FEMA to come to Glendale and inspect those fire trucks before they were sent to them. And they didn't need paint, they didn't need any of that. They came here, inspected it to make sure it's to their standards, it will work in Armenia, and that's when they accepted it. And I was the one who went around, called everyone I knew to, these trucks are very large, they won't fit in trailers. So it was sent to Galveston, Texas, to be shipped to Armenia, because no port in L.A. area could have sent it. So it was sent to Galveston, and that's what, they had Katrina, and it was delayed for a few weeks. But they sent the head of their FEMA to come in and inspect those trucks. And as far as the ambulances go, some of these ambulances that they have over there, they, when we talk to them, and also I think Adventist had the same idea, to send ambulances to them, they said, no. Purchase new ambulances here in Armenia, the ones that are built by, I don't know, Russia or some of those Eastern Bloc, Eastern Bloc countries, because they work in that climate. They work in that climate. Some of our ambulances do not work in that climate in Artsakh or parts of Armenia. And the trains, you know, the roads are rougher than what we have here. The ambulances that we have, they don't last long. So they said, instead of sending the ambulances, help us purchase new ambulances here. And that's what the foundation did, the Adventist did for them, and purchased new ambulances there. And when you look at it, they look really, but it works there, they know how to manage it. So this, let's... So this, let's, again, I'm going to stop here, Mr. Mayor. There's a motion and a second. Let's take a roll call.
I'm deciding whether I want to comment on this or just vote. I'm just going to say, I think the children of Stepanakert and Artsakh deserve better than the used equipment, and I will be contributing to the fund. I guess you announced you're creating a fund to obtain the funds for at least one set of equipment.
Look, if, Mr. Mayor, there are...
I'd rather contribute that way personally than to have something...
Me too. I already did. And there are so many different funds and organizations, nonprofits, that they do that all the time. They raise money and do this kind of humanitarian work, not only in Armenia and Artsakh, in different parts of the world, too. I would appreciate your contribution as well.
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second. Let's take roll call. Councilmember Devine?
No.
Garapetian?
Yes.
Quintero?
No.
Agajanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Okay, before we move on, so let's clear something up. So now, while you're talking about a fund, et cetera, how about just working with Tufanqian? Let's raise money quickly so that they can purchase some new equipment made in Armenia for that particular location. Does that work?
Why do we have to work with Tufanqian?
Well, they had a commitment to, maybe they can, the foundation can contribute half, we can do half.
We invite contributions from all sources.
Right, but I mean, let's...
I don't want to speak for the fund director, for the chairman of the fund, but...
Rather than this fund, I'd rather...
I don't know if the count, it's in our, you know, preview tonight or before us to make that kind of a decision.
No, no, I know that. We can't do that.
But we always work with whoever wants to work. I mean, I contribute to so many different funds every year, and if the Tufanqian opens the door to me as well to help, I'm always willing to help. And I spoke to my friends, Tufanqian friends, this morning. Anyways, we'll deal with it. We have a motion and...
Yeah, no, it's already passed. This is posed...
Let's move on.
All right, so hopefully, we'll be able to get something going there. The second thing is, although that equipment absolutely looks more used than I thought it would be, we have a sister city in Rosarito Beach. Are we still in contact with them? Do we have, years ago, it was very active? I'm not sure that...
They have not been active in the last three to five years, I would say, at all.
Because it's too bad. I mean, we could approach them and see it's much closer, it could be driven with a semi, and so we just haven't had...
That was immaterial, because we had it paid for. We had the transportation.
So we're not, or even the other one in, yeah, same way.
It is one of the mayor's asks for the year for us to rekind of introduce ourselves to the sister cities that we haven't had.
Well, yeah, and I'm just saying, before we scrap it, maybe there's some other part of the world that would be happy to...
Problem is, I mean, council voted to discard it.
The motion was to discard it.
Oh, so this motion is to be...